Good afternoon to everyone. On behalf of the Lodi Optimists Club, I'd like to welcome all of you to our School Board Candidate Forum. My name is Bill Haupt. I'm a member of the Optimists Club for many, many years. And we typically start our forums by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance, so would you please all rise?
I pledge allegiance to flag the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you. We would like to introduce the candidates. At this time, we have three candidates who are seeking, we have four candidates in this election. Three of them are here with us today, seeking two available positions on the Lodi School Board. To my immediate left is Heather Barron, to her left Julie McCarrenan, and to her left Bill Whipperforth. Our fourth candidate is Scott Bilsey. Unfortunately, Scott couldn't be with us today because of a work commitment. We try with these forums to include our partners at the Lodi School District, and we're very pleased today. I think we have two classes with us. Could you, could the teachers from those classes please identify themselves and the classes that they have here today? All right. Thank you, Mr. Hauser.
I'm Felicity Barlow. I have my GSI government social issues.
Thank you, Ms. Barlow. Is there a reason that people still sit so far distant from the action? You guys are guilty too. We, the forum is, is pretty straightforward. We have opening statements from each of the candidates, and after that, it's up to the public to come forward. And we certainly encourage the students to participate. If we could just get a show of hands, how many of you students will be voting or eligible to vote on the fifth, sixth of April? How about the November election? Okay. Well, very good. Well, welcome. At this time, we'll begin with our opening statements, and we'll do it in alphabetical order. Heather, would you please lead us off for 90-second opening statements?
Thank you, Optimists Club, for giving us this opportunity, and for everyone for being here or watching it online. My name is Heather Barron, formerly Heather McGrath. My husband Mark and I both grew up in Lodi and graduated from the district. Our oldest daughter, Sky, graduated in 2016. Our second daughter, Rose, graduated in 2021. And our two sons, Kogan and Sawyer, are still in the district. Mark started his own business while going to college, while I stayed home with Sky. The business continued to grow and to allow us to run it together, while he also allowed me to stay home with the kids. Because of that, I had the opportunity to volunteer in the classroom quite often, coach and manage several different sports, ran the youth cheerleading program for over 10 years, and was a parent volunteer and organizer for many different music and art programs in the district. I got motivated to start paying attention to our district because of COVID. I feel the school was putting politics before our students and families, and it disappointed me. So now, our district can get back to the importance of quality education, giving our students the best opportunities, whether that be in the classroom, socially, and in general, life lessons, and preparing our students to be responsible to make decisions that would allow them to live happy and fulfilling lives after their experiences in Lodi. Because of being a mother of four, coaching and volunteering in the community, I've had the wonderful opportunity to meet many different people. Schools have, to meet a lot of different needs for so many people, and that is why the students, parents, teachers, and our community should always feel that they can express themselves and be listened to by the school board. Running a struggling and now successful business has taught me to be very cost efficient, while being a mother has taught me that experiences can be worth every cent. I feel that Lodi needs to continue having as many opportunities as possible for our youth, needs to make sure our teachers are happy, and make sure they're getting everything they need to continue to inspire our students, and continue and improve on the Lodi feeling of community that we have been so proud of for so many years.
Thank you, Heather. Julie?
Good after, oops, good afternoon. I would first, first, can you hear me? This is, it doesn't, okay. Good afternoon. I would first like to thank the Optimists Club for having this forum, for sponsoring this forum, and it's really great to see all the students and members of the community here in the middle of the afternoon. My name is Julie McCarrenan. I'm running for reelection for a second term on the Lodi School Board. I've been a district resident for over 20 years. My daughter spent from 5K, excuse me, until senior in high school here and graduated in 2015. And I have many extended family members that reside in the district. My niece will be beginning 4K this coming fall. I attended Montello High School. I then went on to the UW-Madison, where I received a Bachelor of Science in Agriculture with a major in agricultural economics and dairy science, with an option in business and industry. I currently serve as the Board Treasurer and the Chairperson of the Facility Finance Committee. I have a diverse work experience background and have been a licensed realtor since 1996. I look forward to serving another term, and I believe in Lodi, and I believe that every student can be successful. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Bill?
Good afternoon. I'm Bill Whipperforth. I've been a board member here since the mid-'90s, and so I've helped build the building you're sitting in. And, you know, I only have just a little bit of input on those kinds of things, but it's here. It's working. As far as family, my five kids went to school here. I have four grandkids currently in school here. And so, if you're comfortable in the building, yeah, I had something to do with that. And if you're not comfortable in the building, we'll talk about it. I'm on the Facilities Finance, on the Policy Committee. I'm interested in Lodi education and community service, so I'm always trying to put people in a position to where they can succeed. Now, the difference is, everybody reviews that different. Some people want to learn. They're interested in what's outside of their realm, and they're willing to take a look at it. Some people choose not to, and some can't. But because of the administration and the board we currently have and the teachers, this high school is the best it's ever been. I want you to know that. When I started as a board member, we were in the bottom third in the state out of 550 schools. Two years ago, we were number 38. Thank you for your help. This year, we're number 16. No small deal.
Thank you, sir. That concludes the opening statements from the candidates, and now we entertain questions from audience members. We ask you to be direct with your questions, please. We have two microphones available, and we will wait for your questions. The first question directed to Julie. If you could please identify yourself and where you're from.
Diana Carles, from Dane, Lodi, resident my whole life, pretty much. I'd like to know if each of you are for or against the referendum. And as a board member, would you be prepared if the referendum fails for the significant changes that the district will go under?
Thank you for the question. Yes, I am for the referendum. We, we really critically need to be able to pass a referendum. The past decade, the school district has basically relied on referendums to fill the gap between the funding and what it costs to run the school district. As far as being prepared to do what is necessary, should the referendum not pass, I am. We would, we would have to make a lot of changes. We would lose programs. We would lose staff. So I, I am definitely for the referendum, and we need to continue to fund our schools to keep the program going as far as what we have. Thank you.
Bill?
I'm all in on the referendum. I've helped plan it. I have 100% distress over whether or not it will pass, because many of the things I've put in place, as I kind of stated earlier, I've helped create and put you in a position so you could succeed. Some people are critical of us. They want to know where the money is going, but you should be able to figure that out anytime you drive past a gas station to put fuel in your car. So we have inflation also. The, the mantra for how we got into this spot was set up in 2011 by the then-current legislature and the governor. And so, they choose not to fund schools, and so they do this amazing thing where if you look at your property taxes, they will tell you how much goes toward education, but the truth of the matter is, it does not come to the Lodi district. It goes to the state. And so, since we can't function on what they give us, we have to go to referendum. So that's how we got here. And the number that we're gonna cut of teachers for next year is not a choice if the referendum does not pass. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Heather?
To be honest, I'm very undecided on this. I will probably vote yes, mainly because I feel the district, I didn't think it was very responsible of them to tell the teachers that they're gonna let go if the referendum doesn't pass. I almost feel like they were, I mean, they know how Lodi feels about our teachers, and we put them up here, and to see the pictures that they might have to eliminate, you got us. You got us right there. But it's a lot of trust issues for me, to be honest. The school, I feel like, should not jump to cutting teachers immediately. I have a feeling, obviously, I'm not on the board. If I get in there, I'm really excited to look at all the little details, because I have a feeling you can cut corners without cutting teachers' jobs. So, yeah, they, they got me. Their trick worked. I'll probably vote yes. But if I get on that board, we're not gonna be wasting money like we have been.
Next question directed initially to Bill Whipperforth.
Come on, I need to hear some of those young voices. Come on, I know you got the questions. Thank you.
And your name, please, and where you're from?
My name's Clayton McIntyre, and I live in Lodi. I was just wondering regarding the mask policy, if in the future another variant appears, how you guys will handle that?
Thank you, Clayton. Bill?
For me, that's an easy one, and here's why. My number-one goal is to keep you in school, safe and healthy. That's no small deal. I'm not a healthcare professional, so we have a group of people that give us the information as to what's in our, in the best interest of our students, and so if we have to wear masks, we have to wear masks. Don't get me wrong. It's not something I am 150% in favor of, but we have to put you in a position to be safe and healthy. Now, will, will something else come along? I don't have an answer for you. This happens to be the first pandemic I've ever dealt with. Now, when I was a young person, we had this little niche called polio. And I'm sure if you check one of your arms, you've got a spot on your arm where you were vaccinated for it. So now, we have to dance with, did you choose to get vaccinated or not? Those are your choices. That's called freedom.
Thank you, Bill. Heather?
I feel that the safety and health of our students has nothing to do with masks. The former FDA administrator literally said cloth masks aren't going to provide a lot of protection. This is an airborne illness, and a cloth mask is not going to protect you from a virus that spreads through airborne transmission. So keeping masks has nothing to do with keeping you in school. So I am against masks. I am for taking care of yourself, eating healthy, taking vitamins. If you don't feel good, yeah, stay away from people, but you don't need to be missing five days of school for a sore throat. So obviously, I would consider if a new variant comes, and I would listen, but at the same time, I'm going to use common sense. And my priority is keeping you kids a good education, and giving you experiences, and not being scared of something that is, what is it? Kids that have died of COVID is .00098%. That seems pretty silly to me.
Thank you, Heather. Julie?
Yes, so I believe that we need, first of all, to have in-person instruction. So whatever that takes to keep students in our classrooms, keep teachers and staff in the classrooms. So if it does require masking for a certain period of time because there is a high activity in our area, community, then that is something that we need to do. I think we have set up several layers of mitigation for COVID, or had, had in place. There's discussion now how to un-layer that, but we're taking that slowly because, you know, we don't know. We don't know if it's going to, if we're gonna have another run of this again. So definitely, if that's what it takes, then we would need to, to mask. I think even with the masking, at one point, we almost had to close one of the schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Clayton. Next question directed first to Heather Barron.
Hello. My name is Patty Mead, and I've lived here as long as Bill, or longer, or the same amount of time. And I have raised three kids in the district, and I have five grandkids in the school right now. And I have always, we've watched school board members come and go. We've watched buildings get torn down and be built. We've watched superintendents come and go, principals come and go. And I've always felt like I trusted the people that we've elected. And I've always felt like whenever I wanted a question answered, I would ask it, and I would get an honest answer. So I would like to know your definition of transparency.
I feel that anybody should be able to go to the school website and find any info they want, whether that's the budget, whether what's being taught in school. Obviously, I, you know, the teachers, we want them to be, have access to, but I don't want their email just out there. You know, we don't need the teachers being bombarded with stuff either. I think the coffee with the superintendents and the referendum meetings are awesome. In fact, the coffee superintendent, I think that would be great to keep as just, you know, every quarter, every six-month thing, and just have people being able to go in there and talk to him about school stuff that they want to know. I also feel that, I, I feel right now that not all situations, but there is some teacher and parent that don't feel they're on the same team, and I find that extremely sad. I want, from my experiences with teachers, I've always put them way up here. I've had great conversations with them, but I know that there's other parents that don't feel that way, and there's other teachers that don't feel that way, and that's not right. So I just want everyone to have, be open book with each other and work together for the kids.
Thank you, Heather. Julie?
Yes, so transparency. I think as a community, we need to do more discussions. I believe that there's kind of a disconnect right now with the school district thinking that we do not have transparency. Things are a little hard to find on the website for those of, those people that like to do, you know, do it that way. But then, there's also people that like to read things in the paper. So I think we have a disconnect with how we communicate with different age groups in our community and how we communicate that transparency. Everything is transparent. It is there. Believe me. I spent a good part of about a, I don't know, hour and a half trying to find something on the DPI, the Department of Public Instruction website. So I, I agree that sometimes things, the information's hard to find, but I think we need to work on that.
Bill?
Transparency relates back to, somewhat to your age. For example, there's a group over here, and you're gonna deal with a computer. Hate to pick on you, but over this way, that might not be your comfort zone. As far as our board meetings, we redid our technology two years ago, and so you can actually see us and hear us at the board meeting. You must understand that our committees do the work and make the recommendations, and then the board votes on it. But I'm available. I live in the same place I have all my life, except for the two years they jammed an M16 in my hands. If you, yeah, that's real. It was called war. If you need me, and your routine is to call people, call me. My name's in the book. If you want to contact me on a computer, contact me that way. Be happy to talk to you.
Thank you, Bill. Next question directed first to Julie McCarrenan. Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Ashton McDonald. I go to Lodi High School. I'm a junior, part of that class over there. And I live in Lodi, so I live actually in the Harmony Grove area. My question for you all is, what are your thoughts on open school campus lunch for high schoolers only?
Thank you. Julie?
That's an awesome question. I would say yes. We used to have open, open lunch. But that does also require, let's see, people to follow the instructions or follow whatever rules are laid out for that lunch period. I think that would be a great idea. As you are older in high school and driving, you know, that's another thing of becoming a young adult.
Bill?
We had open campus when I went to school here. The question is, are you willing to accept the responsibilities that go along with it? Now, we were not able to drive to leave the campus. We were allowed to walk. And then there were all of the details about, from your perspective, where did you go, and obviously, to eat. Do you have enough time to get there, come back, and be on time? Did the students behave like people, or were they doing something they shouldn't have been doing? So are you willing to accept the responsibilities for doing that? Now, this thing is run pretty tight. How much time do you have? Do you have time to walk downtown to do something without driving? Please answer. It's okay. I'll hear you.
So, no, you would not have enough time to walk down to like QuickTrip, such as the farthest maybe you could go by car, if you were not be late, would be the All Stop, kind of by Lodi, so that would be the farthest you could go. Otherwise, you can go always to QuickTrip or Subway.
Thank you, Jason. We get the idea. Heather, why don't you give it a wrap?
Yes, I believe in, I think open campus would be fine. And yes, there's responsibilities that you guys will have to worry about, and that's, that you guys will have to worry about. So guess what? You're gonna learn time management. You're gonna learn that, you know, maybe it's easier just to pack a lunch or eat at school, but yeah, I think it's great. It's just one more way to teach you guys responsibility, and that's, I'm always for that.
Thank you. Next question directed initially to Bill Whipperforth.
First one to bring the mic down. I'm Colleen. I live in Lodi. No one here is an expert on everything. As an elected board member, you'll be asked to make a decision on items that are outside your knowledge base. How do you investigate a subject to ensure the knowledge you gain to make a decision is unbiased and informed?
Bill?
For me, that's an easy one, because I've worked in the boardroom for a long time. And I not only listen to what my board members say, I watch what they do. And through that, can I trust what they say? For example, all of our board is on different committees, and so we have to make a determination whether or not they did their job on that committee, so that comes, that involves a trust issue, and whether or not they gave it their best shot. In other words, did they brainstorm everything? The other thing is, they're only making a recommendation. Pay attention to their recommendation and how they voted. Is it 3-3-nothing? Is it 2-3 or 2-1? You know, pay attention to those details. And as a board, at our meeting, we can, if we have concerns, pull those items out and ask for more discussion. But the main item is trust. We really have a good board. They've earned their reputation.
Thank you. Heather?
I would do my own research, and there's always several sides to every story or situation that's happening. So I would definitely go to different sources of my own research, and then I would probably talk to the community. If, you know, depending on who is, what the situation is. Teachers, I'm planning, if I go on the board, to use teachers as a huge resource. They see way more than parents see, but I would also go to parents, because they see other stuff that people don't see. So I would really, I'm planning, if I go be on the board, to be very busy and get input from all different aspects, and try to see all different sides, and make a decision that would be best for everyone.
Yes, so generally, we do receive lots of information to read from, at the district level or in our committee meetings, and at our, for our normal school boards that happen each month. But I also do a lot of reading, so that, we have what's called the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, and they put out some great, like, podcasts and webcasts and things to listen to of event, or different things that are happening in school districts across our state. So I tend to watch a lot of those and keep up on some of the issues across the state. Also, just, you know, talking to members of our community. A lot of times during COVID, when we were making decisions, I found myself reaching out to people to ask them questions, and so I think that's the other important thing, is to gather all that information. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Thank you, Colleen.
Can I add one thing, since I didn't use all my time? Real quick? Okay, really quick. I did want to say that I would actually use the students as resources. I've gotten some of the best, or different frame, different points of view from my own kids that adults don't even think of half the time. So I would really love to talk to more of the students and hear more of what they would have to say.
Shout out to the students. Thank you. All right. Next question. Heather, you get first crack at the next question.
Hello, my name is Tim Anton. I'm a junior at the high school. I was wondering what was, what is your guys' view on critical race theory, and do you think it should be in our schools?
There's many definitions of CRT, and if, typically, nine out of 10 of the definitions, no, I do not want CRT in our school. It teaches division. It teaches to judge people on their skin color, their background, their ancestors. I am all for teaching about more, more, I'm all for teaching about different backgrounds and different heritage and minorities and all that. And just opening people's eyes to the differences that people have to go through because of different things that they have with their life, but actually to judge someone on their skin color and to hold something against them because of what their ancestors might have done, absolutely not.
Julie?
So I'd like to say again that So I'd like to say again that as far as CRT is concerned, I would like to take the R out of that equation. And really, we need to be teaching critical thinking. And also teaching our, reflecting our actual history of the United States. So whatever that means, means to you. But we, you know, there are a lot of areas outside of race. We can talk about sexism. There's, there's a lot of other things in our history that were unfair. And so I think when you are accurately taught history and can have that critical thinking, then everyone can make, you know, make those decisions for themselves.
Bill?
Well, first of all, critical race theory was created in the 1970s. And this group over here is going to tell me that you weren't born yet. So what it's become is a political issue. And it's slanted in one direction. And as the head of the policy committee, I'm interested in being in the middle of the road. I don't function well on the far left or the far right. But those are your choices. Once again, that's called freedom. Currently, or tonight, again, we're going to be working on a controversial issues policy. And that is to give directions to, direction to the teachers, the administrators, that kind of thing. As a person, I'm interested in you learning how to think, not what to think. And some of the decisions you make in that territory are going to deal with where you come from, how comfortable you are with being there and how well you can understand what the generations before you, whether it be slavery or whatever, dealt with. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Thank you, Tim, for your question. Next question directed first to Julie McKeonan.
Hi, my name is Ken Trinan. I'm from the city of Lodi. I grew up here. And I was on the board for six years as well. So Bill, I have a follow-up question to Diana's referendum question. That is towards Ms. Ron Baron. And then a question for the board.
The question, this question has to go first to Julie McKeonan based on the schedule that we set up here, Ken.
All right. So my question is based on Diana's referendum question. You said that you're undecided. You used the word undecided. And you said that the trick worked. As a voting, you know, when I'm going to vote, how can I determine who I'm going to vote for if they're undecided? What, how can I determine if you're undecided on questions that we ask?
The question, we have a format. We have to stick with this format. So you can, I'll give each candidate an opportunity to, to address that question, beginning with Julie. And then Heather can also get to it. But we have to stay consistent, Ken. So please go ahead, Julie.
I can take a shot at this. So I took some notes there because first of all, it's not a trick, folks. This is not a trick. Our referendum is not a trick. The referendum is if you vote yes, then we have a school district. If you vote no, that's the beginning of the decline of the school district, as well as, quite frankly, possibly the community. We are on an upward trend. We have students trending up. We have housing developments in Dane. We have a housing, we have building right out here across the road. So it's a matter, do you want a school district and community or do you not? And as far as playing tricks, there are no tricks. The, the reason, and I don't know if it was on Facebook, what, what these photos of teachers they're talking about. Of course, if the referendum doesn't pass, we have to cut expenses. Staff expenses are about 78% of our district's expense. Do the math.
Thank you, Julie. Bill?
Well, as Julie just stated, 78% of our, every dollar we spend is on people, their pay, that kind of thing. Now, you talk about transparency. You want transparency and honesty? Yeah, well, I'm notorious for that, even if you don't like what I'm going to tell you. And the truth of the matter is, the reason we notified the teachers that were at risk for the referendum, this is not a scare tactic. This is real. And we have to be fair and honest with the people that work for us. I don't know of any other way to put it. Could we have done it after the referendum? Yes, but there wasn't enough time, according to the law, to get it done. And you keep asking for transparency and honesty. This is it. This is real. And I'm hoping you've had the chance, and I think there's one this Saturday at the Buttercream, to go and get the details if you want them in person instead of getting them out off the website.
Thank you, Bill. Heather?
I said I was undecided because I was being honest. I am not on the board yet. And as board members will tell you, and I'm sure as you know, you are a board member, there are things that you guys know. There's way more info that you get than we get. So I keep hearing that and I understand that. But then at the same time, you're telling me that you're transparent. So if you want us to know everything and know where you're coming from, then tell us everything. And as a voter, yes, I'm going to be honest. Like I said, I will probably vote yes for the referendum because I do not want to lose our teachers. But as a voter, I'm still not 100%. As a board member, I would plan to be totally informed and I would give you a straight answer. But as a non-board member and an outside source, I was being honest about it.
Thank you, Heather. Next question directed initially to Bill Whipperforth.
Okay. Hi, my name is Maddie. I'm a junior and I live in Lodi for almost two years.
Could we get your name, please?
Maddie Griffiths.
Natalie?
Maddie, Madison.
Oh, thank you, Madison.
Yep. Okay, so as a student, I know one of our main concerns is whether we will be listened to. So my question is, what will you do as a board member to take into consideration the student body's direct input and opinions?
Bill?
I believe it's two years ago, we now, as of two years ago, we now have a student representative on the board. It's their job to be amongst you and to bring your message to us. Other than that, and I understand, trust me, being 16, 17, 18, scary as it may be, we are available to you through the computer. We're here for you. Otherwise, we're not here. My job is to put you in a position to be successful. Now, however you want, how far ever you want to take that success, that's determined by you. Thank you.
Heather?
If you personally know me, you know that I teach my own children and all of their friends and classmates with the same respect as adults. I give my kids and particularly high schools, high schoolers, a lot of the same adult responsibilities. And I expect a lot from you. So I would love to hear from you if I get on the board. I ended up having to throw a prom last year for these kids. I didn't get one through the school. And I used my resources and I got the word to you guys. And I hope you know that I'm always going to be an open book for you guys. And I want you to be able to email me, call me. You probably know one of my kids. You can get through them and talk to me because I want to hear from you guys.
Julie?
Yes, as Bill already mentioned, we did add a student board member or board representative. And that has gone really well as far as getting input from them at every meeting. Also, I would like to say that I have been, short story. I tried to get my daughter interested in FFA when she was here at the high school because that organization meant so much to me when I was in high school. And I ended up being a member of the Lodi FFA alumni. So through the years being involved with that organization, I have been in contact with a lot of students, in particular in that area. But very much would like to hear input. And you're free to email or contact me anytime. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Next question directed initially to Heather.
Hi, my name is Ann Groves Lloyd, class of 1980, Diana's class, 100 years ago. I'm also mayor of the city of Lodi. And I hear a lot of criticism about the school district and the city needing to work more closely together. And I just want to know what your thoughts are about ways that the city and the school district could work more seamlessly or more closely together, please?
I think it's a great idea. Obviously, just having community involvement. And obviously, the city of Lodi, town of Lodi, everybody, I would love to see more involved at the district. They're the ones that are supporting our district. So they should definitely feel involved, feel welcome to be involved. And I would be very open to it, obviously. I guess, I don't, since I'm not on the board, I don't know the logistics of it all. But I would be, if I have to open a committee to be a person on that, if I'm on the board, I would love it. I just think it's a great idea. And hopefully, we just get our students more involved with the community in general.
Julie?
Well, I think there is a very integral relationship between any community and their school district. So yes, I would be for increased communication with not only the city, but the other municipalities that we serve. And sitting at one of the referendum meetings recently where we went to the town of Arlington, I thought, you know, we should maybe, as board members, each pick a township or village and go to some of those monthly meetings and listen to what, you know, they're working on. So I think there are ways that we can integrate that, not only with the city, but with the other municipalities to keep up with what's going on.
Bill?
Earlier, I stated that I've been here long enough to help build three out of the schools, three out of the four schools that are here. During those years, we've always had to have discussions with the city. And I will tell you that a lot of the earlier ones didn't go well. And a couple of mayors previous to you, Ms. Groves Lloyd, we asked, as a board, asked our superintendent if there was some way to change that. Could we set up meetings like, you know, once every six months or something to meet with the city? So our superintendent at the time, and that preceded the one that we have now, would meet with the mayor. But the mayor did not disseminate the information he was given at those meetings to his council. So that was a disconnect. I'm hoping that you will do better. Now, the meetings between our superintendent and the mayor go on at least monthly. And there's a more open dialogue between us.
Thank you, Bill. We have time for one more question and then we will have closing statements from the candidates.
I'm Rebecca Wigglesworth. I've lived here in Lodi my, oh, sorry.
It's on. Get closer.
I'm Rebecca Wigglesworth. I've lived here in Lodi my whole life. So the sports department gets plenty of funding to throw on lots of community events. What would the chances be if you're on the board to put more funding towards smaller departments like the music department or the arts department so that we could put on more community events like sports does?
Thank you, Rebecca. Julie, you're first.
Well, I do know that with athletics, they have booster clubs. So a lot of it is funded through the booster clubs and not actually with the school district. And I know that, I believe the music has a boosters club as well. So, but as far as funding, yeah, I mean, we would like to keep any of the extracurricular, the co-curriculars funded. It is, Lodi is kind of unusual or any small town school. So even the small school I went to, and we had lots of opportunities to be involved in many things. You know, you could be literally having, you know, play in sports and, and be in two sports at one time and that type of thing. So I think in that way, Lodi is unique. But yes, additionally, you know, we need to continue to fund all of the co-curricular activities for all students.
Bill?
Gosh, you should have let me go before Julie because she just hit all the major ones. Your funding, depending upon which group you're interested in, comes through your teacher, your building principal, and then through us. Like Julie said, everybody has support groups or a boosters club, that kind of thing. So that's where the real extra money comes through. For example, I'm an alumni of the FFA. So every year, we get together for a tractor pull, truck pull, and there's some other activities to generate money so our students can go down to the Wisconsin State Fair and have money for overnight and money to eat. But it's on the alumni's dime and many of the other trips that the students take to go to the, the state FFA conference or the national conference. So soon, you will have the opportunity to be in the world of adults. Please volunteer and help.
Thank you, Bill. Heather?
I am a huge advocate for activities for kids. My girls were more into the arts and some sports. My boys are more into the sports, but I love the arts. I love the sports too. But we all know the sports get a little more recognition. And I would, I don't know who does the Facebook page right now. But I would love for the face, like if you're a part of the school district on the Facebook page, I would love to get bombarded with stuff that's going on in the school. All schools, all levels, all activities. I want to know, I want to be able to go to that website and find anything about it to get the word out more. Because that play that you guys just put on was awesome. And I would not be up here if I didn't have forensics in high school. So we need to always promote. And yes, we need to get those boosters, get more people involved. But I'm going to be a huge advocate because I know that when you guys are busy, you stay out of trouble.
Got that, Rebecca? All right, thank you. That concludes our questions from the audience. Thank you for your questions. And we will now begin our closing statements. Candidates have a minute and a half for a closing statement, beginning with Bill Whipperforth. Bill?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say thank you for coming. Thank you for caring. This is yours and we share in it. And we are most successful if we can do it as a team. In this case, I have responsibilities, but you don't get to just walk out of here and go to your next class. This is yours. If you have a concern, you need to say something, don't complain about it. Don't go on Facebook and expect, I'm sorry, don't go on Facebook and expect me to get the message. Talk to me or talk to your board representative. Other than that, I've had the chance, I was concerned about getting bored as a board member. So I served seven years on the CISA V board. They take care of the most challenged kids for our school district. For example, if you can't hear or can't see or have some particular special need, you're going to wind up getting your services through CISA V. I'm currently a board member for the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. I'm on the board. We meet about half a dozen times a year. So I get to talk to people from, other people from around the state and find out what their concerns are. So I try to bring that information back to this district.
Thank you, Bill. Heather?
I just want to say thank you again, Optimist Club and everyone for taking time out of your day to be either here or watch it. I want every student to leave Lodi knowing that they were a priority in our district. Not all experiences will be easy, but they feel, should feel supported. I want students to know that they have a place in our district. They feel safe to express themselves and they feel they have a voice. Kids of all abilities should feel supported and be proud of their personal accomplishments. Parents of Lodi students deserve to be heard, deserve to know what their child is being taught and feel they are on the same team as their child's teacher. Parents should feel confident about their child's education and feel that the school is being transparent with them. Teachers need to feel supported and know that their district and school board has their back. They need to let their motivation... their back, they need to let their motivation to teach our youth not be clouded by politics, but rather by getting back to basics and giving the students the resources to become critical thinkers. Teachers need to know that they can come to the board with concerns, thoughts, and new ideas, and know that the board will do everything they can to help them and to achieve their goals. The community needs to trust the school board to make the best decisions for the district, they need to feel confident and proud of where their hard-earned money is going towards. They should also feel they have a place in our district, since they are the ones supporting it. I absolutely love our community, and I'm very grateful to my parents for moving here when I was 10 years old. Lodi schools have been a part of me for more than three-quarters of my life, as a student, a parent, and hoping as a grandparent someday. I'm someone that puts 100% into everything I do, and that'll be no different for the school board. I will not back down, and I will not conform to someone that I can't be proud of. I'm ready to listen, learn, be open-minded, and consider all angles when making decisions. I really hope to have your vote on April 5th, and I will try my hardest to make you proud.
Thanks, Heather. Julie?
So, I would, uh, again, like to thank the Optimist Club for putting on and sponsoring this forum, I would also like to thank everyone else for participating and attending this event, and as we look forward to the future, we need to envision a better Lodi, we need to adapt to change, we need to embrace the future, we need to plan for the future, our students really need and deserve this. Successful schools and successful communities, they are linked, so once again, do you wanna be a successful school and a successful community, or not? That will be one of the questions on the ballot on April 5th. I would just like to thank you again, and please go out and vote on the 5th.
Thank you. That concludes today's candidate forum, uh, we would like to thank and acknowledge our candidates, Heather Baron, Julie McHernan, Bill Whipperforth, and we'd also like to acknowledge Scott Bilsey, we thank these people for coming forward and saying they wanna commit, democracy is a participatory sport, and it doesn't work unless people commit, so we'd like to give our candidates a round of applause at this time. We, uh, would also like to thank our friends and our partners in the school district, uh, and the, uh, the teachers for their involvement, we've had an association of more than 20 years of hosting these forums, with, uh, various administrators and instructors over the years, so we view our relationship with you as a friend of youth as very important, and we're very grateful for your appearance here today, thank you, and finally, thank you to all the members of the public who are here and participating, and that concludes today's forum.